The ten o'clock hour is, in fact, it's ten thirteen. We are here in the heart of Old Town Conyers at nine oh one Main Street. We're calling our meeting to order this morning, and as we start our meeting, we have a very special recognition this morning. I'm going to ask that Commissioner Williams will do the honor of reading this proclamation to one of our very valued employees.
So after I finish reading, if the coroner will come up and receive the proclamation and maybe make a few comments. By the Board of Commissioners, a proclamation, whereas it is with great honor and esteem that Rockdale County acknowledges the exceptional service and dedication of Mrs. Joyce Rogers, administrative manager at the Rockdale County Coroner's Office, who has tirelessly served the community for twenty-nine years. And whereas Mrs. Rogers has demonstrated unparalleled professionalism, compassion, and commitment in her role, ensuring the efficient and respectful handling of sensitive matters within the coroner's office. And whereas her efforts have significantly contributed to the office as a staunch and dutiful member of the coroner's office. And whereas Mrs. Rogers has been a mentor and a source of inspiration to her colleagues, fostering a supportive and collaborative work environment. And whereas her dedication extends beyond her professional duties as she has been actively involved in various community service initiatives embodying the spirit of public service. And whereas the residents of Rockdale County have greatly benefited from Mrs. Rogers' unwavering commitment and exceptional service. And her retirement marks the end of a remarkable era of dedication and excellence. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, in Rockdale County as Mrs. Joyce Rogers Appreciation Day. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this sixth day of August, two thousand and twenty-four. Signed, Commissioner Sherielle Washington, Commissioner Doreen Williams, and Chairman Oz Nesbit Senior.
Ms. Rogers was unable to attend this morning, and our coroner, George Levitt, is here on her behalf. And Mr. Coroner, you've worked with Joyce for a number of years. She's been the heartbeat of your office. Talk to us.
Well, let me first of all say thank you all for this great recognition for Joyce. I wish she could have been here, but she has been... Well, I tell people Joyce is the coroner's office. She was the coroner's office because I spent most of my time out in the field handling cases, and she made sure that the office ran well. We've been in transition since her retirement, and I get phone calls on my cellphone, and they're asking, "Where's Joyce?" You know, because they noticed the difference. I said, "Well, I'm learning everything that she was doing." And she has been so tremendous to this office, thirty years of service, and she was in service before I even became a part of the coroner's office. And her work ethic, many days I would pass by long after hours, and she would still be here, and I would call and tell her, "Would you please go home?" So she worked tirelessly. She worked very hard, and we're so grateful that she came into our lives. There's an old saying that says, "Sometimes people come into your life for a reason, a season, and a lifetime." Well, her reason was for a job. Her season was to work with us, but she has made a lifetime impact on not only me, but everybody in this county, and we're so grateful to receive this on her behalf. And I thought it was just going to be an award for her thirty years, but a day signifying her effort is a tremendous award. And I just want to say thank you all for that.
We thank you and Joyce absolutely. Thank you, Coroner Levitt, for your service, and certainly thank you to Ms. Joyce Rogers, who have been an essential part of our operation, and I can't add any additional words to what the coroner's already said. Joyce has been the face. She has been the coroner's office. Let's give her another round of applause. All right, okay, moving right along, we'll move now to a general review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is item three sixty-six under unfinished business, an expenditure request for Quicken Solutions through the Technology Services Department. This is the annual subscription software for code enforcement and court solutions for the five G, four G LTE data in the amount of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. And I will keep going until I'm...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and item three eighty-six is volunteer appointments through the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission. We have one vacancy for an appointment to fulfill an unexpired term of Ms. Palmer, and that would be through July first, two thousand and twenty-five. I know you are all currently looking through applications. And item number eight, under the regular agenda, will be a public hearing that we will hold during the middle of the voting session next Tuesday relative to the impact fees that would need to be transmitted to A R C. And item three eighty-eight is with the Georgia Forestry Commission for Fire Rescue, Royal Fire Defense Cooperative Lease and Memorandum of Understanding for the Wildfire Assistance. This is at no cost and year-to-year in an amount not to exceed, well, in a term not to exceed three years. Item three eighty-nine is with Grassroots Business Consulting, L L C, through Alenda W. Ricard Hodge for the Superior Court for the Stepping Up Initiative Peer Specialists in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is one year with option to renew two additional twelve-month periods, and this is grant-funded.
And this position is going to make a huge difference in being able to service those clients who are going through the court system and in need of extra support by someone who has had that lived experience and is now certified to do that. It's going to allow Ms. Brenda Ernest to focus on other things and let this peer specialist perform some of those other things that she has been doing all of it. So, excuse me, it's going to make a huge difference.
Right, thank you. Item three ninety is with Complete Demolition Services, L L C, through the Transportation Department for Courtesy Parkway Demolition Project. This is change order number one to contract two thousand and twenty-four dash forty-three to install the wooden privacy fencing canopy trimming on trees along the roadway on the back of the property, allowing access for equipment and removal of free signs. It's an additional ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. This is SPOST-funded. Item three ninety-one is with Seri's Environmental Services through the Emergency Management Agency. This is for the on-call unit price hauling and removal and compliance with the debris management plan. Change order number one to contract two thousand and twenty-two dash one thirty. This is for a three-point-two percent price increase and renewal through September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
A question. Is this for the, for when we have tornadoes or things like this? Or is it, what is it for, and is there a reason for the three-point-two percent increase?
Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask Deputy Director Barnum to come up. Since I'm coming into it and I'm learning this as well, so I'm going to have her come up and speak on that.
No problem.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, this is the hauler who handled when our tornado came through. We have a standing contract with them, and they are our chosen vendor for debris management, and this is a price increase.
Okay, thank you.
Like that teamwork, too. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, item three ninety-two is with Dawson County through the E M A Department for Frequency Memorandum of Understanding for the use of new frequency if needed at no cost, and it's the lifetime of the frequency use. Item three ninety-three is with State Farm Insurance through the Talent Management Risk Division for Subrogation Authorization Release for Property Damage Only and Acceptance of ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty cents. Item three ninety-four is with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration through the Board of Commissioners Office. This is for the Signature Authorizing Letter for the Replacement of Derek Marchman for Program Administrator with Mary Lou Snow as the new program administrator in the SAMSA system. This is submitted for ratification. Item three ninety-five is with S and K Pictures through the Parks and Recreation Department for the Permission of Use of Eight Forty-two West Circle Southwest Conyers, Georgia for the Parking, Work, and Crew Cars for the Filming of Weapons, also known as Maybrook. Two thousand, five hundred dollars in revenue, and the term was July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four through July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and is submitted for ratification. Item three ninety-six is with Enterprise Fleet Management through the General Services Fleet Division. This is the Fleet Replacement Plan, the Second Amendment Change Order nineteen to contract two thousand and twenty-two dash one sixty-four. It's a change in terms of the contract to match Rockdale County's insurance deductible through A C C G, Sourcewell Contract zero-three-zero-one-two-two dash E F N. Item three ninety-seven is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Cornerstone H-two-O for the Patterson Model N C S Pump, and the amount is sixty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Item three ninety-eight is a requisition through the General Services Department for Southeastern Security Professionals. This is a proposal for installing the new badge readers, door strikes, and alarm panel at the Office of the Tax Commissioner located at ten ninety-six West Avenue. The amount is twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Has the Tax Commissioners Office already moved to West Avenue, or they're still in the process of getting it ready?
They're still in the process.
They're in the process. They'll be moving for the remainder of this week, closing half a day tomorrow and close Thursday and Friday, and they will be relocated on the twelfth, Monday.
Thank you.
Item three ninety-nine is through the General Services Department for Floor Creations for Supply and Installation of Carpet, L V P, and Cove Base in the Office of the Tax Commissioner at ten ninety-six West Avenue. The amount is twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Item four hundred is an expenditure request through Velocio for the Technology Services Department for Microsoft Dynamics G P Enhancements. The amount is twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. Item four oh one is an expenditure request of the Georgia Department of Natural Resources through the Water Resources Department. This is the annual drinking water fees. The term is July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The amount is sixteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-five cents. Item four oh two is an expenditure request through Caterpillar for the Transportation Department. This is for a Skid steer equipment stolen payoff amount. The amount is ninety-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. The insurance reimbursement is seventy-five thousand, eighty-three dollars and fifty cents, and this is host-funded. Item four oh three is rezoning case two thousand and twenty-four dash zero-two. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning nineteen hundred Southeast Dogwood Drive from R M Residential Multifamily to M One Limited Industrial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading. Item four oh four is an ordinance to amend Chapter sixty-six, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Rockdale County Code of Ordinances as amended to enact an ordinance creating a juvenile perfeu, to repeal conflicting laws, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading. Item four oh five, a resolution of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners to accept the withdrawal of the rezoning case two thousand and twenty-four dash ten without prejudice and to waive the twelve-month prohibition on subsequent amendment applications on the subject site. This application was withdrawn at the last zoning public hearing. Item four oh six is a utility easement agreement through the Water Resources Department for Salem Lakefront Lake Land Lot one seventy-one of the Tenth District for the Salem Lake Sewer Force Main. Item four oh seven is with Hatley Plans, L L C, through the Planning and Development Department. This is for the two thousand and twenty-four Annual Capital Improvement Element Update Report in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and is for six months.
All right, let's bring this down to public comment.
Do we have any red cards? Anyone want to speak this morning? We have one. Okay. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are an act of litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Ms. Marlo McCollum. Come on up, Ms. McCollum.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I wasn't really sure where I was supposed to address my issue, but as you said, my name is Marlo McCollum. I own a business here in Rockdale County, the insurance firm. Been in business here for about thirteen years. And we had signs put up on our building as well as on our windows, but we were cited recently by code enforcement for the rule that I couldn't find because it was buried deep in a whole lot of rhetoric.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Marlo, what is the address of your business?
Twenty-two eighty Salem Road, Suite one oh three.
Yes, ma'am.
So the tip was anonymous, so we don't know who called on us. But the limit is thirty percent. We've only given fourteen days to make a decision. The windows were very expensive, and I'd asked for more than fourteen days. I wanted to know the reason for the ordinance that nobody was able to tell me, and even when I received the letter and I looked, and it doesn't really say. It just says the percentage. So I was trying to find out how I can find out the reason for the ordinance and how I could challenge or ask for a revision of the twelve-plus-year-old ordinance. So, and that's why I'm here today, because I didn't know what direction to go in or where I was supposed to go to try to seek help.
Well, I certainly appreciate you coming out this morning. We're going to get you the help that you need. The Planning and Development Director is here this morning, and he'll make sure that he gets you his card before you leave, and we'll sit down with you and make sure he goes through the ordinance and explains to you the nature of the ordinance and how that apply across the county. Anytime that any citizen is, you can always visit our website, but I really appreciate your presence this morning, bringing it to our attention. But you're at the right place at the right time, and we'll make sure you get the information that you need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCollum. Thank you so much. So Deputy Director, we will be sure not to allow Ms. McCollum to leave without making sure you make positive contact with her this morning. All right, that concludes our public comment. We're moving into board comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Washington.
Thank you. I don't have a lot today. First of all, congratulations to Rockdale County Public Schools for coming back. And I'm wishing all of the students, the faculty, the teachers, the administrators, and the school board a very productive school year. So the superintendent spoke at the N double A C P meeting last night and gave us some very good, good projections. I know a lot of, there have been a lot of things that aren't so positive that are going on, that have been projected about the school system. But I would suggest that people also look at the positives. We've made improvements in just about everything, and although we might have some ways to go in certain areas, we are on a continuous improvement track, and so those things need to be taken into consideration. The second thing that he asked from, for, from the citizens is that we get involved with the school systems. Don't just sit there and complain, but be a mentor. Go read to a class. Do something where you're helping these students with their education instead of just complaining about it. So I took that to heart, so that would be something I'll be working on myself. The second thing that I have to say is that on August the twenty-fourth, from ten o'clock to twelve o'clock P M., State Representative Doreen Carter and State Representative Segwen Adenya will be having a listening session. It will be at Redemptive Life Christian Fellowship at four oh six Pleasant Hill Row in Conyers, where Dr. Mark Thompson is the pastor. Special guests are Denise Mitchell, Tisa Smart-Washington, who's our Tax Commissioner, Pam Brown, who is on the Board of Education, Shaquilla Baker, I'm sorry, Shaquilla Henderson Baker, who's on the Newton County Board of Education, and of course, myself. We will be listening and hopefully answering questions. If we don't have the answer to the question there, we will be getting you the answer to the question if we don't have it. But we're trying to listen to the community and having that community listening session. Once again, it is Saturday, August twenty-fourth, from ten o'clock to twelve o'clock at Redemptive Life Christian Fellowship at four oh six Pleasant Hill Row in Conyers. And right now, that's all I have until someone jogs my memory on something else.
Commissioner Williams?
Okay, so I have several things this morning. The first is the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office is starting a program called Wander Alert, and it's to provide a safeguard for people with memory issues, cognitive issues, even intellectual disabilities that would create an environment where people would tend to wander. And what it is, it vulnerable citizens include those with dementia, those with autism, Down Syndrome, or any other intellectual developmental disability. And so if you or someone you know fits that criteria, then you can contact Major Lejohn Tate, that is L E J O H N, all one word, dot Tate at rockdalecountyga.gov, or kinatra dot tutt at rockdalecountyga.gov, and get that person enrolled in that and get all the details of exactly what that means. But at one of the meetings I was at a few months ago, they talked about people who wander and those who, they often wander close to home. And if they're not found, they often pass away close to home. So the sooner a person is missing with those kinds of characteristics, the better the opportunity of finding them. So you don't ever want to wait and say, "Well, they've always come home before." Just that may be the case, but always just, you know, if you anticipate there's an issue, just call nine-one-one and then, but beforehand, get them enrolled in Wander Alert. Secondly, I have some other notes. I shared some at our last board meeting that I had gotten at N A C O, but there's some interesting statistics that were shared in the Health Steering Committee that I did not share with you last time. I think the biggest one is that general drug use among youth is down, but deaths are a hundred and eighty percent higher, which while there's fewer youth using, the risk to using is much higher because of the fentanyl involved. And so I noticed that we have had in Rockdale County a ten-year grant for the Rockdale County Drug Youth Coalition. That grant is running out. And so we need to be looking at other ways that we can begin to keep our youth safe and provide opportunities for them. Another thing that I mentioned that food is medicine last time and policy is medicine, but I missed the one on housing is healthcare also, and how important housing is. And as we've completed the task force on the homelessness issue here in Rockdale County, we need to be looking forward now, making plans of how to solve that homeless problem. Now, I realize there are people who prefer to be homeless. I know them. But many people do not want that lifestyle. And so we need to be assisting as good, much as we can in developing plans to address this issue. We have, the task force presented the scope of the issue, and now we've got to come up with solutions for that. Thirdly, this next, next week, next Thursday on August fifteenth, is my Sixth Annual Nonprofit Appreciation Brunch. Pastor Sheldon Landry is going to be our keynote speaker. He will be out at Costly Mill from ten to twelve. Right now, registration is full, but, so, which means Eventbrite won't let you register. However, if you have not registered and would like to come, if you will just email me or deedra, D E E D R A dot Golston, we will put you on the list. We know that people, sometimes things come up, and they are not able to attend, and we want to make sure that everybody who wishes to attend can do so. Those are my comments for today.
All right, very good. Commissioner Washington, any additional comments from you?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, I, Deputy Director Relish, anything government affairs related that we need to be aware of? Any meeting dates and times?
Yeah, let's talk about the meeting dates and times for August. So next Tuesday, we will not be having a work session, but next Thursday, the twenty-second, we'll have a zoning public hearing. And then that following week, the...
Wait, wait, wait. Next Tuesday, don't we have a voting session?
I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. The twentieth, the following Tuesday, August twentieth. I'll be more specific. How about that? So Tuesday, August twentieth, we will not hold the evening work session, but that same week, we will hold the zoning public hearing on the twenty-second. And then the last week of August, we will have our regular work session at ten A M., but then that afternoon of the twenty-seventh, we will start holding our budget work session. And then the following day, which would be Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, will hold a full day of budget work session. So we do have some things coming up.
Very good, and we'll continue to keep the public abreast and posted as we move forward. The budget sessions will be in reference to the two thousand and twenty-five budget for Rockdale County. Absolutely.
I know this is August, but we are rapidly wrapping up the rest of this year, so...
And we also have our Transportation Summit that's coming. What is the actual date? Can't remember the date of the Transportation Summit.
Let me see if I can pull that up on the calendar.
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth is, okay, yes. And that will be out at Costly Mill.
Very good. All right, Chief Sanders, any updates from your office?
So we do have a few. P R has some videos. We have a few really good stories to share this week. We'll start with one of our employees in stormwater and was a hero, so I think they're working on getting...
We always like good stories. Yeah, absolutely.
Everyday heroes are all around us, often going unnoticed as they make a positive impact in our communities. But we want to take a moment to recognize one who works right here in Rockdale County, Stormwater. Thank you to the Rockdale County resident who emailed us to highlight this amazing story.
Hey, my name is Jay Jeffries. I'm with Rockdale County Heavy Equipment Stormwater. Been in transportation since 2006. My everyday task is get out of this truck that you see before me, operate the heavy equipment, digging out trenches, stuff like that. I work with a team, attitude is everything, the model that we live by. Other than that, you know, we serve the public in more ways than one. On Tuesday, July 23rd, I just had an average workday. I was in the left lane of the work site. I just so happened to drive by. I almost missed when it hurt. I looked to my left and I see a man laying flat on his back. Got out of the truck to, you know, to investigate a little bit further. I wasn't quite sure if it was a joke or anything. So I got a little closer to him. His eyes were not blinking. They were staring straight up the sky. I placed the 911 call and tried to get his attention, tried to talk to him too a little bit. He wasn't really responding. I heard a slight gasp and then the gasp of breath went away. After that right there, she kind of guided me and she was asking me questions. How did I have him? How was he laying on his back? What was going on with him? She suggested I lay him on the side because his mouth was filled with fluids. Once the fluids came out, he still wasn't breathing and I didn't want to waste any time at that point. So I suggested to the 911 operator that I was going to start chest compressions. So I probably was in the chest compressions for probably about maybe 30 seconds until I heard that gasp appear. And then once that gasp there came by, first responder came about, which was a police officer. So forth and so on with the EMS and then them making his way to the hospital. The good news for the day is he wasn't breathing inside of the little oxygen mask or what have you. And that was really, to me, the sad part about everything is that, you know, you've got to continue your workday, so.
You should take it off. I'd be like, I need to-
Now, let's give him a round of applause. Wow. Wow.
I would have gone home. It'd have been time for lunch.
You know, it's employees like this young man that makes a major difference had he not stopped. You know, we now live in a world where people just mind their business and keep it moving and don't stop. And they, and he talked about being cautious about as he approached the person laying on the ground. But I thank God that he stopped and he rendered aid to that person. It made a big difference. So let's give him another round of applause. Wow, that was really good. That was, that was, that was a good-
Hard to follow any of that.
Very good.
The next one, we do have, very timely, while we're working on the village and the budget, we have an award for our Department of Finance.
Outstanding, outstanding.
Chairman Commissioners, we are very proud to announce that we received a 2024 Recognition Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from Government Finance Officers of America. And I want to read something. This award represents a significant achievement by the entity. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation stated a GFOA news release. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. The Department of Finance would like to specially recognize Deputy CFO Narinder Bardwaj, Budget Manager Bill Vaughn, and Budget Analyst Sanethia Boyd. She's a new employee, came in, was tasked with putting this budget book together, got to meet multiple departments and get very familiar with Rockdale County. And we're very proud that we received this.
Let's give them all a round of applause. Absolutely. Commissioners, congratulations to our Finance Department and the leadership of our Finance Department. And even with new employees who come in with super talent to be able to add value to what we're doing in the area of finance. To be able to receive this distinguished budget presentation award speaks volumes for what's happening throughout our department in the area of finance here in Rockdale County and financial management. Now, let's give the Finance Department a, see her for another round of applause. What else you got?
More good news for our Technology Services Department and our Director Margaret Moore Jackson. Our Director, some of our Directors go to NACO and if you've been there and you know, Director Moore Jackson is very involved. And she attends all of the technology forums. And she has been recently appointed to serve on a committee by the President of NACO. And I believe they have a graphic.
Wow, that's a big deal. Let's give Director Moore Jackson a round of applause. In fact, Commissioners, Chief Sanders, I really want to hear from Director Moore Jackson. Come on up, Director Moore Jackson's, and just add a little value to, because when you talk about these conferences and making sure that we're staying on the cutting edge, when you think about technology, technology has changed since this meeting has started. And we have to make sure that we're on the cutting edge of technology here in Rockdale County. We have an award-winning Director of Technology. Y'all give Director Moore Jackson another round of applause. Talk about your experience and how this came about.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Madam Commissioners. And first of all, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to attend the NACO conferences. Because at the NACO conferences, before the conference actually begins every year, in reference to the Legislative Conference, which is held in February each year, and the Annual Conference, which is held during the summer, there is actually a Chief Information Officer's Forum that is held prior to each conference starting. And this is orchestrated by NACO's Information Technology Department and of which we have Technology Services Directors and Chief Information Officers from counties all across the country to come together and actually first start the morning off with a round robin, where basically topics are placed on the board. And these are topics in factors like cyber attacks and the different software applications that the different counties are using. And we actually do round robins, where you're not just sitting there listening to a lecture, of which we do that during the different conferences, but they also make sure that we switch throughout the room. And we're given a chance to interact with other Technology Services Directors and Chief Information Officers from around the country in order to learn new software applications and also how those applications are being used throughout counties across the country and what's the best practices and the pros and cons of those and the best ways to make sure that we're securing our counties and also making sure that everyone's working under the understanding that it's not a if, but when we will be the unfortunate victims of an attack. So therefore, every day, teaching us how to work to make sure that we have the measures in place to do our best to bring the county, get all of the counties back up and operating as quickly as possible.
Director Moore Jackson, you're a fine example of the benefit of going and attending these conferences, both the Legislative Conference as well as the National Conference that we have, the General Conference that's taking place with NACO throughout the summer. But being able to be a part of a network from all across the country, led by the National Association of Counties, where you can interact and stay on the cutting edge. Just two weeks ago, we experienced, as many other folks in the region, the impact of what happened and what did not happen with CrowdStrike. And we saw more information about that last night. It's rolling in the news right now. Being able to stay on top of cyber attacks, as she eloquently put it, not if, but when. Technology is a part of every single thing that we do. Having the right talent, the right professionals who's representing your county and making sure, even when the incident happened two weeks ago, you and your team were literally up in the middle of the night responding and making sure that Rockdale County, from a cybersecurity standpoint, was in the right place and able to respond and get back up in an adequate amount of time. We're fortunate to have you and your staff on board, the talent that you bring. And this recognition and award just speaks volumes to the work that you do on a day-to-day basis. I know that the Commissioners join me in thanking you because we remember when you came on board and the major changes that you made to our infrastructure when it comes to cyber and security and our network as a whole. So y'all give Director Moore Jackson another round of applause. Absolutely. Continue to represent Rockdale County. Keep going to those conferences and keep us on the cutting edge of what's happening now. Thank you so much.
May I make one more statement, please, sir? And just want to emphasize one more, once again, that because of the membership in committees like the Technology Advisory Committee for NACO and other professional organizations IT-related that we're involved in, we actually had, were provided with preventive measures hours before it was publicly provided because of our role that we're playing in these organizations. So thank you, all of you, for your support in making sure that we are involved in these organizations.
Technology matters. Thank you so much. Give her another round of applause.
All right, one more, but not an award this time. Public Relations has been working with the Department of Transportation on a media campaign. And they have a video just to make the public aware that there's three major projects that are about to begin this fall for transportation. So I know they're working on the video, but, oh, here we go.
Did you know progress is rolling towards Rockdale with three major Georgia Department of Transportation roadway construction projects set to begin this year? That's right. You heard correctly. Three major roadway projects are set to begin this year. The projects are State Route 162, Salem Road Widing Project, the Courtesy Parkway Bridge, and Interstate 20 at State Route 138, State Route 20 Interchange Reconstruction and Widing Project. These projects are all scheduled to begin as early as October and can span over the next three to four years. What does this mean for you? If you travel these routes, begin to start seeking alternative routes and adjusting your travel schedules. While all of this may be coming at once, this will improve capacity, traffic flow, and accessibility once the projects are complete. We will continue to give updates as more information develops. Please pardon our progress. Thank you for watching Rockdale.
You know, I really appreciate the Public Relations Department putting that particular video together, giving us a county-wide heads-up. Progress, probably there should be signs all over the community that says, "Pardon our progress." Now, we've asked for this kind of improvement, particularly in our infrastructure in Rockdale County. We need it. But guess what? It's going to be a little painful. It's going to take you out of your comfort zone for those folks who typically late to work or late wherever you go into it. You're going to need to set your clock, be extra early. You know, you're going to have to be on time. And I like what the young lady said, Ms. Owen said, go ahead and start mapping out you another route, an alternative route, because it's coming. Well, oftentimes, when the progress comes, people tend to complain. But they were complaining before the progress because there was a need. Well, we've got to get through the pain in order to enjoy the gain of the progress. Does that make sense? So listen, I hope, Executive Director Menz, are you already rolling this out on every social media platform that known to man? Start immediately following this, thank goodness. This is really good. So listen, tell a friend, tell a neighbor, tell a family member, tell a child, tell somebody that's driving. Get up, leave early, don't be late. You're going to get stuck in traffic and it won't be nobody's fault but your own. So this is really good. Almost, I almost stopped there. She's going to show it every week. We're going to keep reminding folks about this progress that we're making, the 2G dot projects. You know what? PR, run it, run it, run it back again, play it again. You're going to listen in a different way this time. Watch this.
Did you know progress is rolling towards Rockdale with three major Georgia Department of Transportation roadway construction projects set to begin this year? That's right. You heard correctly. Three major roadway projects are set to begin this year. The projects are State Route 162, Salem Road Widing Project, the Courtesy Parkway Bridge, and Interstate 20 at State Route 138, State Route 20 Interchange Reconstruction and Widing Project. These projects are all scheduled to begin as early as October and can span over the next three to four years. What does this mean for you? If you travel these routes, begin to start seeking alternative routes and adjusting your travel schedules. While all of this may be coming at once, this will improve capacity, traffic flow, and accessibility once the projects are complete. We will continue to give updates as more information develops. Please pardon our progress. Thank you for-
Thank you to the PR team. Thank you to our Transportation Department. Let's give Transportation and GDOT a round of applause. Absolutely. Our population is growing in the Atlanta metropolitan region. I know some of you all thought I was going to say in Rockdale. It's growing in the region, throughout the region. And guess what that includes, Commissioners? Rockdale County. So we're not on an island growing by ourselves. The entire region is growing. Every city, every county throughout the state of Georgia is increasing the numbers. And according to the Atlanta Regional Commission, in the next three to five years, Rockdale County would have already hit the 100,000 population mark. So with that growth, there's a requirement of more law enforcement, more educational service, more of all of the services that we need. Public safety, we have to have more fire stations, more people, more growth. And we have to prepare. And one of the things that is critical is our infrastructure. This Courtesy Parkway Bridge, and let me tell you, we're really going to be highlighting that during this year's Transportation Summit. But this Courtesy Parkway Bridge, correct me if I wrong, Executive Director Rattles, we've been talking about it, or it's been talked about for at least 30 years.
1998.
Night, well, that's a long, long time. Absolutely. So now it's coming to fruition. It's going to relieve a lot of that congestion and that traffic on 138. So a lot of these things are happening all at one time. It's going to be, it is going to be a little something to kind of shuffle and work through, but we'll get through it. Rockdale is resilient. The progress is happening. So again, we say pardon our progress and we look forward to the days ahead. But go ahead and start planning your routes because you're going to need to take some alternative routes as you navigate yourself across from the north side to the south side of the county.
I have a question. Is there a reason why all of them are starting around the same time?
Well, come on up, Director. I'll yield to the Director.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Madam Commissioners. A lot of that was dictated by when the designs were completed and when the right-of-way was procured. So they happened to fall at the same time. So everything, everything-
That's going to be the number one complaint I was thinking, is why we let them all let at the same time because you have two, you have Salem and 138 being constructed at the same time. And I think there's some other provisions we're working on, segment two. So if there's, if we can craft the answer to why we would do it all at once.
Well, let me say this, Director, because I've been intimately involved with what's happening with our transportation and connected with the Georgia Department of Transportation. But a lot of times, it is about timing. It's really not an issue we let something happen. I think it's about timing, the funds being available, and projects coming to fruition. The design phase of a lot of these projects, particularly the Courtesy Parkway project, has been in the design phase for quite some time. Now, we've demolished some of the buildings and the right-of-way. It's a legal process that the community must go through that a lot of times the laypeople don't know anything about. That's the reason I really highlighted that video because there are going to be people, just like what the Commissioner says, why did they let this happen all at one time? Well, we didn't let it happen. It came to fruition. That's the way plans come together. There's only one project that's really a Rockdale project. The other two projects are the Georgia Department of Transportation projects. And I think in teaching and educating our general public, explaining to them- the State Route one sixty two project and the Highway one thirty eight project, those are state projects by the Georgia Department of Transportation. The Courtesy Parkway project is a county owned project. But we have to do that in conjunction with the federal government as well as with the state government. You do know Interstate twenty is a federal interstate. So all of those things have to come together. I think in crafting the message, Commissioner, I would encourage you to take a moment to try to educate those folks and explain to them how these different pieces to the puzzle come together. We didn't just wake up and say, we're going to just create all these transportation projects and create this this transportation mobility nightmare at one time. It's a blessing, and sometimes when the blessings come, you can't really plan it, you've just got to be ready for it. And we've got to make some provisions to prepare as we move forward. Thus, we have this very good announcement to to educate folks. But we're going to be continuing to explain and educate and remind folks as we go. But no, we're not just letting this happen at one time. It it happens to come together all based upon timing and and release of funding in the projects.
So that was going, isn't funding availability a big part of why-
Absolutely.
Everything is coming at one time, that we have a certain amount of a limited amount of time that we can use the resources without them reverting back. Thank you.
That's correct.
Director Kelly, we are excited about your upcoming transportation project. And I think that was a very valid concern coming from Commissioner Washington. You and your team be prepared to break that down and craft that message so that we can continue to sit it forward. Because everybody's not watching this broadcast, everybody's not listening, everybody's not tuned in. And there will be people who will say exactly what she just said, why did they let that happen? So be prepared to respond accordingly. Thank you so much, keep up the good work. Is there any need for, well, first, Chief, do you have anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all right, very good, very good. Executive Director Relish, is there any need for executive session this afternoon?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much, this meeting is adjourned.